This conference is no longer being recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
This one, I'll call the June meeting of the Kernersville Planning Board to order. To the staff to do a presentation, short presentation on how the meeting will run tonight. Joe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So tonight, the public comments received, public comments that have been received are online for review. You go to TOK underneath Town Government, to the Planning Board Agenda, Meeting Agendas, and there's a link to the current comments we have received. During the public hearing, on that same agenda item, you'll see at the bottom, Shields Road Public Comments, that's that current link. And so we went to the current link to be current public comments. During, there's a 24-hour public comment period after the public hearing is closed. As required by state statute, agenda items that include a public hearing shall be continued for a minimum of 24 hours to allow for additional public comments. The 24-hour also allows for the Planning Board to review all comments prior to taking action. So by Wednesday morning, we'll post all the public comments received during that 24-hour period for public review and allowing the Planning Board also review. The Planning Board may close the public hearing tonight. If the public hearing is closed, the Planning Board meeting will be continued to Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. So this coming Wednesday, the public may watch live using the same link, which is the TOK NC YouTube site. Public comments during the public hearing tonight, we have two public hearings. And one item is a non-public hearing item of the final development plan, which requires no hearing. But the two public comments periods, first, after the Planning Board staff gives a presentation, the first phone calls that will be accepted will be public comments in favor. After the public comments in favor, Planning Board will take comments against. The phone number to call during the public hearing is 336-996-7289. We'll also have this posted during the presentation. If the line is busy, please try again. The public hearings will remain open until the last phone call is answered. Also, emails can be received during the public hearing at r joseph@toknc.com. Email comments will be summarized and posted online. So the emails will be summarized, but the full email will be posted online. And the goal will have those being posted Wednesday morning, prior to the Planning Board's Wednesday meeting. And that's all I have, Chair.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is a roll call to determine, we have a forum. As I call your name, you just say present, please. Margaret Burks?
Present.
Diane Byers?
Present.
Luann Davis? Luann Davis?
I see her on screen.
She's here, too. She's here.
She's present.
Microphone. Steve Hutchins? Steve Hutchins?
Present.
Tom McDaniel?
Present.
Nathan Meyer?
Present.
Chris Oakman?
Present.
Joe Orinstein?
Present.
And Jim Waddell is present. So we do have a forum. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 11th, 2020 Planning Board meeting.
I move for the approval as submitted.
We have a motion for approval?
I'll second that.
Steve, do you second?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Then we'll take, we'll take the vote. Margaret Burks?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Yes.
Luann Davis?
Yeah.
James Frattonburg?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
Yes.
Tom McDaniel?
Yes.
Nathan Meyer?
Yes.
Chris Oakman?
Yes.
Joe Orinstein?
Yes.
And Jim Waddell is a yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public session. It's a final development plan. Mr. Waller, PE of JC Waller &amp; Associates Agents for Owner, for a final development plan approval of site plan titled 250 Greta's Way Warehouse in the LI-S Two-Phase Zoning District for property located at 250 Greta Way, being all of pin number 6885-4387, plus or minus acres. Petitioner is requesting approval of the site, of the second phase of a two-phase special use district zoning permit. The recommended uses are as listed in the staff report. And this is zoning docket K547 FDP TRS LT1. Joe?
Yes, Rochelle Joseph, Community Development Manager, will make the presentation. We'll switch our screens and so she'll pull up her PowerPoint.
Thank you. So the screen that you're looking at now is just to reiterate that with the final development plan, it does not include a public hearing, and the Planning Board can take action on this item tonight. The Planning Board may or may not open up the meeting to public comments for this case. The property in this case is located at the intersection of Hampton Plaza Drive and Greta's Way Court within Stafford Center. The zoning is LIS Limited Industrial Special Use District, and the surrounding properties are LIS and HBS, Highway Business and Special Use District. The site acreage is a little more than two acres, and the proposed uses range from bank and financial service to light manufacturing and medical or professional offices. This final development plan indicates a proposed building that is approximately 17,000 square feet in area and would serve as a multi-use flex space to one or more of the previously mentioned uses. Customer access is, and parking is shown off of Hampton Plaza Drive, while the service and loading functions are shown off of Greta's Way Court. The original special use rezoning of Stafford Center included conditions for the building facade materials. In this case, the developer has proposed an all-brick building with stone accents. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan as submitted and the conditions as shown within the staff report. If you could answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this point, not the Planning Board? Okay, although this is not a public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak, would you so forth now?
Adam, has any phone calls been received?
No, sir.
Rochelle, any emails been received? For this case?
I'm doing double duty here. No emails received for this case.
Okay, good. So any question, any further questions on the board? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve?
Who made the motion for approval?
I made a motion to approve the final development plan. I think.
I second it, Margaret Burks.
Okay. So we'll go through the roll, roll call again. Margaret Burks?
Yes.
Diane Byers?
Yes.
Luann Davis? Luann?
You can confirm with your hand, too.
Yeah. Luann, can you hear us?
Yes, I can finally. Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay. Jim Frattonburg?
Yes.
Steve Hutchins?
Yes.
Tom McDaniel's?
Yeah.
Nathan Meyer?
Yes.
Chris Oakman?
Yes.
Joe Orinstein?
Yes.
Jim Waddell is a yes, so it's a unanimous decision. Thank you. Next item on our agenda are public hearings. Once again, there will be no final decision made on any of these cases. The final decision will be held over to our meeting on Wednesday. First public hearing is a rezoning. Greg Garrett, Agent for Owner, petitioner is requesting a single-phase special use district rezoning from AG Agricultural to RS12-S PRD Residential Single Family Planned Residential Development, special use district for property located near the southwest terminus of Teague Lane at Watkins Ford Road, being all of pin number 6873-57-5501, containing 12.44 plus or minus acres. The requested uses are residential, single-family, PRD, a planned residential development. This is zoning docket K-762.a1. First, we'll hear the staff report.
Rochelle Joseph will make the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Waddell. This property is located near the intersection of Teague Lane and Watkins Ford Road. The property is a mix of woodlands and fields that adjoins parcels, zoned agriculture, and mixed-use special use district. This is the Caleb's Creek Development. That's the mixed-use special district, special use district. This proposal is for 20 single-family lots in a planned residential development, a PRD. The PRD is intended to provide flexibility in new development concepts and encourages mixed uses, private roads, variable lot size, and conservation of open space. Planned residential developments containing 40 or more units are required to have an onsite common recreation area with no less than 4,000 square feet. While this phase of development has only requested 20 lots, the developer is showing an open space at the northwestern corner of the property as conditioned within the staff report. Staff is recommending a condition which states that at the time of construction plan submission, the developer shall show and provide details for the intended use of the open space. The town of Kernersville's adopted thoroughfare and street plan identifies the importance of connectivity within the street network. This project shows two potential road connection points, one connecting with the previously approved phase of this project to the south, and a second connection shown as a street stub to the north for future connections with the adjoining parcel. The Kernersville Development Plan calls for Kernersville to have residential areas that are predominantly single-family. The site plan reflects a proposal for 20 single-family homes. Low density in this case is defined in the land use plan as zero to three units per acre. The density for this project is two units per acre. The UDO also requires a 30-foot buffer yard around the perimeter of the site, which is also shown on the site plan. The character and density of the project is similar to that of Abbott's Plantation and Caleb's Creek and creates a transition area from rural to more urban development. The proposed home sizes will range from 1,600 to 3,000 square feet in area and include arts and crafts style architectural characteristics. The sides and rear will include options of vinyl shake, board and batten, and vinyl lap siding with mixtures of brick and/or stone combinations used on the front facades, and in some cases, on all facades. Staff recommends approval of the following motion and the site plan labeled Exhibit A within the staff report with the conditions listed in the staff report. Move to amend the unified development ordinance of the town by rezoning the property in case K762.a1 from AG to RS12-S PRD, the said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, Kernersville Development Plan, and further being both reasonable and in the public interest because of the following facts. The petitioner requested a special use district rezoning, allowing building architectural standards to be applied. This assures the development addresses the development plan goal of establishing Kernersville as a unique, high-quality community within the triad. The petitioner requested special use district rezoning, allowing a specific site plan to be considered to address the unique character of the area and to allow for the appropriate buffering and transition from existing residents. And I'll restate at this point that, as required by state statute, the agenda items that include a public hearing shall be continued for a minimum of 24 hours to allow for additional public comments. This 24-hour period also allows the Planning Board to review all public comments prior to taking action. The Planning Board may close the public hearing tonight. If the public hearing is closed, the Planning Board meeting will be continued to Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. You may watch the proceedings live using the same link that you're using this evening. That's TOKNC.com/youtube. If the public hearing is closed, please note that the Planning Board may or may not open up the June 10th meeting to public comments.
Okay. Thank you, Rochelle. Any questions of staff on the board at this point? Okay, if not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Do we have anybody?
Adam, any calls?
Yeah, one right now.
Oh, this is Jeff Hatling. Are you on? Adam, was it the applicant?
Yeah, I got Greg Garrett.
Okay, Greg Garrett, you're on.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hold on, he's not on it. Okay, Greg's on.
Mr. Garrett, if you'll state your address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Greg. Yes. My name is Greg Garrett. And my address is 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, Clemmons, 27012.
Okay, thank you very much. Please proceed with your comments, please.
Everybody, turn your mics off.
Oh, board members, please, mute your mics, please.
Is there anything I should do on my end? I've given a lot of feedback.
Yeah, sure.
It's coming from you on YouTube.
Greg, you got YouTube on the background. I need you to turn that off and just listen to the call.
There you were, this Mr. Garrett.
Okay. So hopefully, everyone can hear me.
I can hear you, but I didn't hear the previous person.
Okay. Well, my name's Greg Garrett, and as I mentioned, I reside at 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, Clemmons, North Carolina 27012. And I represent both the applicant, Sugar Homes, as well as the property owner, the Chamberlain family. And tonight, we have before you a, you know, 12-and-a-half-acre tract of land that adjoins a 30-acre tract of land that's currently under development by Sugar Homes. This is going to be, with your approval, a, just a extension of a current development, a subsequent phase. And we are proposing to build 25 homes on the property at a density of just two units per acre. The homes will be in a price range of low 200s to mid 200s and will be consistent with the homes that have been built out in this area of Kernersville. We spent a lot of time working with your staff and appreciate everybody's effort in trying to continue to move business forward during these very challenging times. So I just want to give a special thanks to your staff and to the board for making this possible and being creative to keep business moving forward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would, you know, hope that you'd find that this is very much a good use of the property, development of the property, and would appreciate your favorable vote tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Garrett? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Garrett. I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor of the petition?
No calls, sir.
Do we have any calls or anything against the petition? No. Okay. Here, no one, then I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the final decision will be made during 6 o'clock on our Wednesday meeting. Next item on our agenda is another public hearing, a rezoning. Bill Greco of Land Solutions of North Carolina, Agent for Owner, petitioner requests a single-phase special use district rezoning from RS20 Residential Single Family to RS12-S PRD Residential Single Family Planned Residential Development, special use district for property located at the intersection of Shields Road at Union Cross Road, being a part of pin number 6885-068134, containing 39 plus or minus acres. Requesting uses is residential, single-family, PRD, a planned residential development. Zoning docket K-781. Once again, if everyone remembers, there will be no final decision on this one tonight.
Thank you, Colonel Waddell. This is Jeff Hatling. I'll be giving the presentation tonight for K781. Once again, we'll repeat what Rochelle brought up, public comments during the public hearing. Phone number to call into the public hearing is 336-996-7289. The line is busy, please try your call again. The public hearings will be, will remain open until the last phone call is answered. An emailing, email during the public hearing is r joseph@toknc.com. So that's r joseph@toknc.com. Public comments that have been received are online for review. If you go to toknc.com, the town of Kernersville website, under Town Government, under Meetings and Agendas, you'll see a link to the Shields Road Public Comments. As mentioned before, 24-hour comment after a public hearing is closed is required by the state statute. Agenda items that include a public hearing shall be continued for a minimum of 24 hours to allow for additional public comments. The 24 hours also allows the Planning Board to review all public comments prior to taking action. The Planning Board may close the public hearing tonight. If the public hearing is closed, the Planning Board meeting will be continued to Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. So this coming Wednesday, you may watch live using the same link as before. Since the public hearing will be closed, the Planning Board may or may not open up the June 10th meeting to public comments. Tonight's case is described. This is RS20 Residential Single Family rezoning proposal to RS12 PRD Residential Single Family. It's 39-plus acres. The total acres, 81.48, 81, I'm sorry, 41.84 acres, 2.84 acres are currently in stream restoration easements. We'll talk about that later. 117 lots with a density of three units per acre. The land use plan for this area, the Kernersville Development Plan calls for the site to be low-density residential. The land use plan defines low-density residential as, the town has identified that one of its unique, high-quality community components is residential areas that are predominantly single-family residential. The larger the single-family designated, the larger the single-family designated area, the greater supply of available land, which assists in supporting a greater price range of single-family homes. The low-density, single-family residence has been the primary land use in Kernersville. However, rising housing costs and smaller household size is causing a greater demand for higher-density residential. Lower-density residential shall have a density of zero to three units per acre, unless the area has a lower density, then zero, zero to two years per acre shall be considered. So this is straight out of the land use plan definition. The surrounding area, the surrounding area has a mix of density, ranging from Field Crest, which is adjacent, is a PRD at 1.98 units per acre. Surrounding, single-family attached projects like Salisbury Crossing, Cracker Ridge, Tredagar, PRD. There's some ranges of single-family detached and attached in both Salisbury and Tredagar. And that density ranges from 2.2 to 5.9 units per acre. And that density ranges from two point two to five point nine units per acre. Here's an aerial of the, of the site. Straight to the west is Field Crest, south and east is Ivy Redmond Park, Tredagar on the other side of the park, South Park Industrial Center, and is vacant land across the street to the north, across Shields Road. The site plan, the typical lot widths are fifty-five feet, five thousand square foot, lot sizes as shown on the site plan. There's a thirty-foot type-two buffer yard along the, along the border of the site, so the site plan, you'll see a thirty-foot type-two buffer surrounding the site. Street trees will be fifty-foot on center within the development. There's a two point one seven acre common area consisting of a totlot play area, a mail kiosk, and a parking lot for the two uses. Arrow shows where the totlot is. There's forty-six percent of the site is common open space, there's some arrows going showing the common open space around the site. In the middle and along the highway, it was in that common open space is also some of the buffer yards. There's a public sidewalk to Ivy Redmond Park. As shown regarding the stormwater and watershed. There's a unique watershed protection that exists on the site, they deeded conservation easements for a stream restoration, which the town undertook. It's located along Tredagar, and Tredagar, I believe, has some of the stream restoration easements on their property, and also along Ivy Redmond Park. This is the headwaters of the Lower Rabbit Creek, um, that the town undertook for stream restoration, with the understanding that this area will be developed, including the triad, I mean, not triad park, but the Ivy Redmond Park will also see new development, uh, that will drain into these stream restoration areas. Stormwater treatment pond is provided. Prior to construction, a complete engineering stormwater construction plan is required. In a time of construction plans approval, a state sediment erosion control permit will be required. So during grading of the site, um, they'll be under state sediment erosion control, and when they begin their infrastructure of stormwater streets, um, that will come under town permitting. The building design submitted are two illustrations provided, which includes hip and gable roofs, window trim that incorporates the use of decorative shutters, heads, aprons, and cornices. Well-defined stylistic front entrances with panel doors, panel garage doors and framed with decorative trim. Design features will be required on all sides, and also distinctive trim shall be incorporated. Regarding traffic generation and comparison, the Institute of Trans, of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Tenth Edition has single-family detached housing per dwelling unit generating nine point four four trips daily per units, and nine point four trips daily per units. With a hundred seventeen lots, a proposed residential project would generate one thousand one hundred four point four eight trips per day, this would be the estimate based upon the Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Manual. The properties currently zoned RS twenty, a comparable RS twenty PRD could establish nine ninety-one lots versus a hundred seventeen lots, with an estimated traffic generation of eight hundred fifty-nine trips per day, which is two hundred forty-five point four four less trips per day from what is proposed. So if they came back through the RS twenty PRD process, um, the max they can do is ninety-one lots with those trip generation, so that's the difference between the current proposal and what's existing today. Traffic counts, N C D O T undertakes traffic counts every two years, the two thousand nineteen traffic counts should be released later this year, they're currently not available. When we go back and look, the N C D O T traffic counts, Shields Road at Union Cross intersection, two thousand seven, prior to the, our last recession, was sixty-three hundred trips per day. Two thousand seventeen count is eighty-four hundred trips per day. Union Cross Road, a Shields Road intersection, the two thousand seven count fourteen thousand trips per day, two thousand seventeen fifteen thousand trips per day. Traffic improvements, as shown on the site plan, right-left turn lanes shall be provided along Shields Road and shall be reviewed and proved by N C D O T. There's also one point two nine six acres being dedicated for, for future Shields Road widening. Connectivity, the Field Crest and Tredagar neighborhoods that express concerns that the proposed traffic, street connection become a major cut-through for drivers wishing to avoid a traffic backup at Union Cross Road and Shields Road intersection. Until such time that N C, N C D O T can make intersection improvements, staff is recommending the following condition. This is a special-use district, in a special-use district, you have to remember, there's a specific site plan and there's specific conditions. Staff is recommending the following condition, Street A, which is a street that ties to Imperial Lane, shall be connected to Imperial Lane. A gate shall be installed to prevent non-emergency traffic, the gate shall be secured with a not lock, Knox lock, approved by Kernersville Fire and Rescue Department. The gate shall remain in place until Union Cross Road and Shields Road intersection improvements are made. So it would be locked off except for emergency services. Until such time, the intersection improvements at Union Cross and Shields Road are made. Currently, there's no plans, um, for that to be undertaken, there's no funds from N C D O T or plans that have been reviewed or approved by N C D O T. So that's that current proposed future connection after road improvements are made at the intersection of Shields Road and Union Cross. To further address the neighborhood's concern about custom traffic, staff is recommending the following condition, so we're adding this tonight, we're recommending this added to tonight's recommendation, that would go in front of the planning board decision on this coming Wednesday. The street connection between Shields Road and Emperor Lane shall be redesigned to follow a similar alignment as shown to the right. So the access off Shields Road will be shifted to the east, and more of an indirect route to the Field Crest neighborhood, which will eliminate that access at that point. And so it'd make it a route that an average person would, would not want to take, and this would be, this would be a route that would only be open to Field Crest after the intersection improvements are made to Shields Road and Union Cross. Staff recommendation regarding rezoning, move to amend the unified development ordinance of the town of, of the town by rezoning property in case K seven eight one from RS twenty to RS twelve S PRD. It said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, the Kernersville Development Plan, and further being both reasonable and a public interest because of the following facts. The petitioner requests a special-use district rezoning allowing building architectural standards to be applied, this assures the development addresses the development plan goal of establishing Kernersville's unique high-quality community within a triad. Secondly, the petitioner requests special-use district rezoning, allowing a consideration of a specific site plan to address the unique character of the area, and to allow for the appropriate buffering and road improvements on Shields Road. Regarding the site plan, staff recommendation, approval of the site plan, which includes Exhibit A of the site plan, with conditions listed in the staff report, was a follow, added condition. The street connection between Shields Road and Emperor Lane shall be redesigned to follow a similar alignment as shown below. So in the staff report, staff is recommending this additional condition be added if consideration is made on Wednesday night. Once again, during the twenty-four hour public comment period, the required state statute allows for public comments to receive for additional twenty-four hours, all those comments will be posted online. The planning board may close the public hearing tonight, if the public hearing closes, the planning board meeting will be continued to Wednesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty at six P M. The public may watch live using the same link to the town of Kernersville YouTube station. Public comments during the public hearing, so this is important, for anybody who wishes to participate during this public, public hearing. After this staff presentation, the first phone calls that will be accepted will be public comments in favor. So the first phone calls that we will accept for public comment will be in favor, this is just like a regular public meeting or public hearing where fore speaks first and against speaks afterwards. After public comments in favor, planning board will take public comments against. And remember, the phone number is three three six nine nine six seven two eight nine. The line is busy, please try again, you're, try again your call, the public hearing will remain open until the last phone call is answered. For emails, email during the public hearing, R Joseph at T O K N C dot com. And that's staff's presentation, it should be also noted that the public comments during the twenty-four hour period afterwards, um, will be received, and we will post those online once again, um, for the planning board to review, for the decision-making in the staff, in the staff and the public to review. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff at this point, from the planning board?
Jeff, I've got one question.
Go ahead, Tom.
With the new, with the new condition you're putting in for the, for Imperial Road, do you really need the gate, could you do away with the gate?
That, that's a good question, um. And I, I do not have an answer for that. Tonight, we can, we can look at that. Or any decision made on Wednesday?
We'll look closer to that for our Wednesday meeting call.
Okay.
One, one comment, um, I, I like the new configuration and the fact that it moves that entrance further away from the stoplight on Shields Road. You know, I don't know if the traffic counts took in fact, into account the, um, you know, when a soccer game ends or not, that light can back up, um, pretty, pretty big, so, um, I'm, I'm pleased that, that's a, that's a good recommendation.
Other questions, is there?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Diane.
Um. That creek that runs back there behind the park, oh, I think I have some concerns about the stormwater runoff with that creek, and is there farmland that's still gonna be farmland through that area?
The, the current property owner, um, for this development owns all that farmland, uh, south of Shields Road. And he worked with the town of Kernersville in granting conservation easements, um, for the stream restoration. And so the, so we anticipated Ivy Redmond Park and this tract to develop, and that was taken in consideration when the stream restoration took place. And one reason for the stream, stream restoration is to stabilize the area, you know, with existing conditions and future conditions. The property owner is not asking for rezoning of the track that is right at the intersection of Shields Road and Union Cross, um, that will remain vacant, or he may have crops on there in the future. So that kind of is the scenario of the track that we're seeing tonight in the property owner.
And when I rode by there, it looked kinda like they're already been working on it, or like building it up or something, or? Do you know? And have we finished all of stream restoration, 'cause I, didn't we spend a lot of money on that stream out there already?
Yes, the stream, um, um, it's my understanding, I believe the stream restoration is completed, I can get more information to you on that.
They should not be doing anything to the site now though, right Jeff?
Yeah, thi- this development will not impact the stream restoration area, um, that's why we have the conservation easement on it. And also the engineering design, it took in consideration the future development that would take place and flow through these streams. Um, in addition to this site and Ivy Redmond Park that will flow to the street, restore stream areas, across the street, the vacant land across the street also flows to their stream restoration areas.
But haven't they been, have they not done something out there already?
The petitioners, Diane, are you talking about for the stream restoration?
Um, I'm talking about the land that we're talking about, almost looked like they had already, there, it, it just looked like to me that there was some excavation or something that had already went on out there.
Uh, tomorrow, staff will go out and provide public comments, um, regarding that. To see what, you know, I know the town is, is, you know, of course, had done improvements for the cross-country track, um, over time, the field has been farmed, but I don't believe the field is being farmed currently.
I mean, I was out there yesterday and I, I didn't see anything, I didn't see any development or anything.
I noticed that work in the Field Crest area. When I went out there, I noticed some work in the Field Crest area.
But not this site.
Not this site, correct?
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
The staff will follow up, in fact, into the public comment portal, um, current status of the stream restoration and if there's any work being done on the site currently.
Okay, any other questions from the board for the sta, for the staff? Okay, before I open a public hearing, I'd like to just make a quick comment to the, to the public, you're more than welcome to make whatever comments you would like. If, we would like to request that if you hear someone else say what you are going to say in your comments, please think about not making a comment, because we don't need to necessarily hear the same comments from everybody, okay? With that in mind, we will go and I'll open a public hearing, anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition?
Adam, you have any calls yet?
Hi.
No call then.
Am I passed through at this point? Excellent, hey, uh, my name's Bill Greco, I'm with Land Solutions, I'm the agent for the petitioner.
If you'll state your name and address, Bill.
Bill Greco, G R E C O, our office is located at two hundred South Regional Road in Greensboro, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, first of all, briefly, I'd like to echo the previous, uh, petitioner's comments, uh, with regards to staff and the board and everyone with the town, um, putting forth the effort and, and, and aligning the technology to allow this, this hearing to take place and to, to keep commerce moving forward. Also, the staff has been just, uh, excellent to work with throughout this process. I am going to, uh, start my comments a little backwards than what I normally would, the last discussion the board was engaged in was regarding equipment onsite and/or the appearance of work being done. Uh, to my knowledge, all the equipment that's out there, that was out there, I haven't been out there in a few days, uh, that was all town-related, that had to do something with Field Crest. And our property owner has reached some, uh, agreements and temporary conditions with the town to allow the town to use that property for staging and for access to conduct some work that the town is doing. So we, we haven't done anything to the property with regards to the development, um, that's all town stuff. Circling back, I think, uh, briefly, I don't particularly like to retread too much old ground, but we have spent a significant amount of time and effort and collaborated, uh, with the town to present to you what I believe is a very reasonable, uh, application that does meet and/or exceed all of the governing documents in the town that are applicable with regards to the land use plan, with regards to the future land uses, the density. I think, uh, you know, as the staff has presented tonight, we are in lockstep and harmony with all of our governing documents, which is exactly, um, you know, our, our plan from the onset was to try to make sure that we were able to meet all of the various street scape conditions and things that come along with, um, your governing documents. We did choose, uh, a PRD, and one of the driving factors on that, if you look at the design, and if you're able to, and if you can't, I'll provide it for you, if you're able to overlay onto the aerial, uh, you can see that we're, we're keeping all of our development and all of our disturbance, if you will, for the most part, in the of our development and all of our disturbance, if you will, for the most part in the areas that were previously farmed over the years. We're leaving significant stands of mature trees along the perimeter of this, this project, everywhere that they exist. We do, as you, as you've already seen, we do have a permanent in-place stream restoration easement that the town is, is partnered with and manages on. So we feel like we've, we've gone above and beyond in our design in terms of how do we fit this project into the existing land. We're not looking for significant changes as it's approached from any direction, frankly. On the, the public comment side of things and what we, what we have been in flux with and, and of course, that was evidenced tonight by the, the second condition that, that staff recommended. With regards to the traffic and the Emperor Lane connection, we've been extremely flexible with that piece. We certainly understand it. Any, anyone who lives on a, a stub street or in a neighborhood that has a stub street, it's, it's fairly common that certainly no one jumps up in favor of those types of connections. But, you know, we, we should be mindful of the fact that the ordinance and the town requires these types of things so that we can plan for the future and plan for multiple points of ingress and egress in emergency situations that, that may arise. And we're, we're frankly very comfortable with the, the concept of the gate that would be in place until such time as, as there's some improvements to the intersection of Union Cross and Shields Road. And also as to the realignment, if you will, of, we're proposing a single entrance at this point. We have been through at least three to four iterations of this plan whereby we had at one point, looked at a concept of two entrances and, and the town weighed in on that and DOT and we all came back to one. And we've simply kind of kept it in the middle of that, the entirety of that road frontage on our plan. And shifting slightly to the east has, has been suggested, we're perfectly fine with that condition as well. Obviously, we don't want to create any burden on anyone and certainly we wouldn't want to create a, a traffic situation. So we're, we're comfortable with both of those conditions. I'm confident that we can work with staff and arrive at a quote unquote final design that alleviates and takes care of as many concerns as possible. We're also, I, I think it was noted, we're installing left-hand turn lanes, right-hand turn lanes, storage, and have dedicated significant land to the future when some additional improvements may be made out on the, out on the main thoroughfare there. This project overall, again, I, I think it's, it's certainly worthy of your consideration. I think we've, we've put together a very reasonable plan that, that meets the, the ordinance requirements, meets the land use requirements, exceeds in a number of areas. And we would appreciate your support and consideration. Happy to address any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Greco, about the board?
Yeah, question here, Joe Ornstein. So, Mr. Greco, one of the main concerns raised in some of the preliminary letters and documentation we have seen from the local residents would be relate around the property value of their homes and, and homes and kind of surrounding developments. Can you speak a little bit to what kind of quality of homes are expected to be built in your development? What the, give us kind of an idea, range of purchase prices and maybe speak to alleviate those concerns about home value in surrounding developments? Thank you.
Yes, sir, certainly. Probably the first thing I would do, and I'm not able to put it up on the screen, but I would circle back to the, the language that's contained within the land use plan. And to paraphrase that, in these situations, in a surrounding area or in an area, if you will, you, you know, a mix of price points, a mix of density is the, the best of both worlds and the best of all worlds. I think we've, we've landed at a price point that is a, I'm gonna call it starting at 250, 275. It's, it's a minute premature to, to put a fine point on, on that because we haven't gone through all of the construction, engineering, design process. But certainly that's, that's out of the gate where we would expect to be. With regards to property values, I would certainly make it clear that I am not a licensed property appraiser. I would however, offer my opinion on that, that that works very similarly to how we evaluate surrounding areas with regards to, in a neighborhood A, may be at a certain price point and a certain style and look. Neighborhood B, maybe something certainly different. But when appraisers and lenders are looking at the property value of a home in neighborhood A, that's going to have a certain age, certain qualities, and they are going to look to the surrounding area to find similar comps is, is how they refer to those. So it's, it has, in my experience and opinion, very little to do with what's immediately beside you. They want to compare apples to apples. If they were focused too singularly on the immediate adjoining property, the only analogy I have for that is it would be, you know, certainly throughout all of North Carolina, you can drive upon a million dollar estate farm, whatever you want to call it. And along that same rural or semi-rural road, there's some other structures and housing that are certainly not equal. And they're often adjacent in the rural communities. We think our buyers these days are becoming more and more educated through the use of the internet, any number of television programs that speak to things that are behind the scenes and buried in the walls with smart homes and green technologies and certain other things that we'll be incorporating here in this project. And we also think we've got a, a very reasonable color palette, material palette with brick, stone siding colors trim that, that lends itself to, to, to maintaining that character of the surrounding area. So I, I hope that addresses your, your question and concerns. And I know the public has commented on that and that's always, that's always a concern on everyone's mind. And I generally, on the heels of, of opining on that subject, circle right back to the fact that it is a, a land use question. And I think we're still checking those boxes.
So Bill, just as a follow-up to that, and, and perhaps this is something that can be provided with, you know, subsequent comment from, from your team, but I, I think it would be worthwhile to get an idea and something I didn't see in the materials, perhaps I missed it. But would just be something along the lines of average anticipated, you know, floor space in these, in these homes. I mean, what are we, what are we talking about as far as livable floor space and, and maybe some other information beyond, you know, just the, the visual, what they look like? I think that would probably help alleviate some concerns on that front. Certainly have done a great job, in, in my opinion, of addressing some of the, the traffic issues, maybe not all of them, but certainly have done a great job to, on addressing those. And I would say that that's probably the other big thing, as I was distilled through some of the comments, that was a big concern, was that the development was going to diminish the value of homes nearby. So perhaps that's something that can be kind of added to it and maybe not in, at this stage, maybe at the next stage, but certainly something I think worth considering.
Understood, and we will definitely do that.
Any other questions, Mr. Greco? Thank you, Mr. Greco. Yes.
Jim.
I'm sorry.
This is Luanne Davis. Can you hear, this is Luanne Davis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Greco, I, I wanted to ask a little bit about this site plan. There's a phase one and a phase two. Does that mean one phase will be one price point and another phase will be another price point?
It does not have any, the phasing has nothing to do with price points. And what I anticipate happening on this project is it will be a multi-year build out. We will come through and, and certainly start in phase one with the product and the materials and everything else that is agreed upon. My experience in these neighborhoods is, you know, the right choices upfront and they stay very consistent throughout and if not, go up. By the time you get to a hypothetical phase three or four, typically over that period of time, everything has, has gone up a little bit. The price of materials, the price of asphalt, the property values, generally a town will have a, or a county will have a reassessment, you know, within a three-year window. So the phase lines on this one are just all planning zoning minutia. We've got a, within this entire master plan, we have a density shift between phase one and phase two, but it's the overall end of the day numbers on the entire site that keep it at that low density as recommended by the land use plan.
Thank you. One other comment, the staff, where you've connected here on Emperor Lane and have made it a little more difficult, I guess you could say, to cut through to, to move the entrance closer to Ivy Redmond Park. How close is that entrance to the other, Beeson Road? I, I've been out there about four times since we got this material. And at five o'clock, if you're coming down Shields Road from 66 over to Union Cross, traffic is backed up past Tredagar and the office park or the business park on the right. So I'm just wondering how, how anyone's going to get in or out to this neighborhood or to Ivy Redmond Park or Tredagar? And I realize it's only two times a day, morning and evening, but that traffic backs up way down the road.
Well, I, we certainly understand the concern with the traffic. And as far as that entrance, it can be shifted within reason. And the other, the other thing I'll add to this, and it's, it's not an attempt to dodge the question by any means, however, NC DOT is going to have a significant amount to say and to permit with regards to our entrance, our turn lanes, our storage, every, every aspect of that. These are public streets. They're intended for the public. So there's a couple of things that go on there that are at play. DOT operates from a mindset of what they refer to as level of service. So they have an A, B, C, one, two, three rating on, on public streets. To my knowledge thus far, we're, we're still in what the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation declares a reasonable and functioning level of service. Twice a day, some traffic backing up at a light, as much as none of us would like to hear it, that's pretty acceptable to DOT. They also don't have any problem whatsoever when they come out to do their assessment and they review our driveway permit, our street connection, they're not timid. They, they will say, you know, here's what we believe as the, the governing body on this, you guys need to do with this development. And that may be extending the turn lanes to account for the future. We already know they're going to want right-of-way dedication, so they don't ask for right-of-way dedications if they're not looking towards the future. So as much as I would like to have the, the be-all, end-all ability to, to answer all those questions really specifically and, and land on here's exactly what it'll look like, I'm just, you know, that's not how the system works. But we're, we're, we're bound and determined to, to meet and exceed all the DOT requirements. And frankly, we don't have a choice on their requirements.
And follow up on that, Luanne. The distance from Ivy Redmond is over 700 feet. And as Chris mentioned earlier, it's, we're fortunate to be able to push further away from the intersection, giving that backup more room without clogging as in intersection. Also, we need to remember, as described by the applicant, NC DOT will determine the storage of the right and left turn lanes, you know, based upon current traffic conditions. And so if there is that backup on Shields Road from Union Cross intersection, you would probably look at a bigger storage on a left turn, turning into the new subdivision. Also, you have to remember, traffic lights offer some breaks in traffic, allowing for the future residents, if this project is approved, where turning right in is no problem, you just slip right in. The left movement, you know, either will be brakes in traffic due to the traffic light and also there'll be storage in a left turn lane.
Okay, thank you.
Let, let me ask the board members, when you, when you go to speak, state your name first so that the public knows who's speaking. They may not be able to tell who's speaking. Any further questions for Mr. Greco from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Greco. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Do we have anywhere else online or email?
No emails.
Okay.
No phone calls, sir.
Okay. So for you to know, we have no one, so I'll switch to the other side. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition?
We've got two holding right now. Kathy Atkins is first. I'll go ahead and unmute her. All right, Kathy, you're on with the board.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Atkins, could you state your name and address for the board, please?
Yes, Kathy Atkins. I live at 1295 Emperor Lane, Kernersville 27284.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I, I thank, thank you for giving us the ti, me the time to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of the, all eight, all 28 homeowners in our subdivision with regard to this matter. And obviously by the discussion that's taken place and some of the changes, you have heard from most of our homeowners and they've reached out to express their concerns via emails, letters and petitions. And so I want to put into context some of those things and acknowledge some of the things that you've already talked about here this evening, but we still have some concerns that we would like to, to raise. But we would like to begin by saying that my neighbors and I do not oppose responsible growth and development in Kernersville. And we, we're also very mindful of how difficult your jobs are as the planning board members. And we appreciate your service to the town in that regard. It's not easy. I've served on a lot of boards, done a lot of this kind of work in the past. The other thing that we'd like to say right up front is, and, and I certainly have experience that everyone has, we want to commend the Community Development Department, Jeff, Michelle, Beth Price, maybe there's others that people have talked about on their responsiveness and professionalism to our request over the last couple of weeks. They, they've really been very helpful and we appreciate that. We believe that the planning and rezoning initiative should be in the best interest of everybody involved and for the greater good of the town of Kernersville. So, so our desire here tonight is to ask that all involved work to achieve that objective. And, you know, an initial question that we've had is, what, what's the rush? Why not take the time to assess all the impacts and mitigate those in the best interest of everyone concerned? You know, we outlined those concerns in a letter from our HOA, HOA president, Brad Hausneck. We drafted that in conjunction with an attorney that we've retained. Yes, we're, we're very concerned about this. We're very serious about it. Jim Hoffman of Hoffman, Koenig &amp; Haring is our, our attorney in this matter. And I know that you have that. Some things have changed, so I will address those as I go through my comments this evening. So there's been a lot of talk about traffic and safety. You've made some changes. I, certainly I, and I'm sure the rest of the homeowners appreciate that. I'm speaking on the fly now. But I don't know, I don't believe that that totally mitigates our concerns. Okay? Almost any additional traffic through our neighborhood resulting from a cut through from Union Cross to Shields is going to propose some, some safety concerns. Will what you've proposed reduce that cut through? Probably so, but there'll still be people who will cut through because that intersection is a real problem. And I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Then there's going to be additional school bus traffic and it'll be a detriment to the overall quality of life in our neighborhood. In our neighborhood, children play freely together across yards, across sidewalks, playing ball, falling out in the street, kids, you know, riding their scooters down the street. And we have the adults walking and commuting together on a daily basis for pretty tight ni, uh, necks. tight-knit community, everybody knows each other. So, that's important to us, and so, as I said, while we appreciate that, we don't think that totally mitigates the problem. The other issue, as anybody knows, and it's already been mentioned by a few of the board members tonight, and we appreciate that, but the congestion around the intersection at Union Cross and Shields Road is already a problem today. And people in all directions have to wait through several cycles of that signal light during weekday rush hour. And in the mornings exiting onto Union Cross from surrounding neighborhoods is a real problem. People have to add several minutes, you know, to their commutes to do that, and it's a little bit tricky getting out of there, it can be dangerous. We appreciate the fact that the developers have added right and left turn lanes on Shields Road, and they've dedicated right-of-way easements along Shields Road to accommodate future widening. And that's certainly appropriate and appreciated, but it won't solve the intersection problems or the probable need to widen Union Crossroads. So, the question is, you mentioned, North Carolina DOT is going to have a lot to say about this, well, let's find out what they have to say. Why not get that full study done and take the corrective actions before you move forward with this project rather than afterwards? There's also talk about the gate, and we appreciate that consideration, you know, but it says, until Union Crossroad and Shields Road intersection improvements are made, we're asking why a temporary gate? You know, when will those improvements be made and what kind will they be? And why not do the study and develop a plan in conjunction with North Carolina DOT to develop that plan to mitigate the congestion? First, why would we ever need to remove such a gate? If it works when there's significant congestion, why wouldn't it work when there's less, hopefully minimal congestion, if we get the right answers to what will be going on on Union Cross and Shields Roads? We heard the discussions about stormwater, but you have to admit, those of you that know anything about what's going on in our neighborhood, we have some legitimate concerns about stormwater and runoff. Yes, let me tell you, as a person who's been on the board here for going on three years, that the town of Kernersville and us have been talking for years about erosion problems in our neighborhood, at the creek bed, in one of our neighbors' backyards, huge hole, lots of problems, they just spent tremendous resources working on those. So, we've been told, the only thing that we've been told is that there will be minimal stormwater runoff by the road connection of the two subdivisions. But we want to know is, and the staff report says that it's required by local state ordinance that the preliminary location of the devices to be used in the system shall be shown on the preliminary subdivision plat. The findings stated by the staff reports say, the project shall be required to comply with watershed and stormwater regulations. It doesn't say that it does comply right now, it says it shall be. So, we're just, we're saying, what are those requirements? Warrants included in the plat now? Will and where will trees and vegetation be left to provide a buffer and absorption for water runoff? I heard Mr. Greco say that they've taken that into consideration, and I'm glad to hear that, but we would like to see the evidence of that by means of the study, to talk about what does minimal mean, if there's, you know, and to define that. That way, we can use the facts and data to make informed decisions about what needs to be done. Property values, yes, we are concerned about property values. And property values will most assuredly be affected. There's a difference in design standards, size of homes, density ratio between field crest and the homes that are going to be there. Nice homes, we recognize and respect the need for such developments of being, as being proposed here, and the efforts that they're making. I just got a 57-page report that hit my email right before I got on this call, that we asked to be made to verify the difference in, what could be proposed differences in values, which we will be submitting, but it's reasonable to assume that. So, you know, we're talking about, why would we opt for a solution that will negatively impact existing citizens? Why not find a different configuration to make that not happen or leave the gate in place permanently so that there is not an absolute connection between the two? We also have some educators in our community, and the question was asked, and it's probably a reasonable one, has anyone contacted the school board to see what impact this influx of homes will have on schools in our area, to enable them to plan for it? We think that needs to occur in time for sufficient actions to be taken to accommodate additional children in the school system, although I know that will be phased over time. Also, collaboration, we learned about this proposed development owner about May 22nd. Now, that may be standard procedure, but for a development of this magnitude and significance on the surrounding area, we think it would be prudent to, and in good faith, to have gotten them involved before that and allow us to have a meaningful role in this decision-making process relative to the development. Also, it said during Form One, submitted process, the developer told staff they intended to contact adjacent property owners. The adjacent property owners in our neighborhood got an undated letter from Land Solutions of North Carolina P L L C on June 1st, which was four days ahead of this meeting, that said it was to introduce themselves to provide us with our, with their contact information should we have any questions or simply want to discuss this project with our design team. You know, we'd welcome that opportunity, we'd like to have those discussions, we'd like to make this work well for everyone, but why not wait until that happens and we all collaborate, get the facts and the data, and see if we can't meet the needs of everybody before proceeding? You know, we have several families in Fieldcrest who moved to Kernersville from outside the area, even outside the state. And they specifically chose Kernersville and Fieldcrest because of what they both have to offer. These people tell me all the time that they see Kernersville as a great place to live, yet it's thriving, but yet it's small, safe, friendly, and a caring place. They see it as a place where government is not interfering in, but enhancing our quality and way of life, and they see it as caring about the well-being of all of its people and constituents. The question is, do we want to become the town that people no longer feel that way about? Just think of the kind of message we would send if we worked together to get this right for everybody. And we believe that's possible with a little more time, due diligence, and collaboration. You know, the town regulations say, the Board of Alderman, and I know we're not there yet to the Board of Aldermen's, but that they may place such other conditions or requirements with the development of the subdivision, as the Board of Alderman may deem proper for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town. Well, we believe those conditions exist right now, in terms of the current staff report, although I would concede that you have made some attempts to make that better, again, appreciate it. But nonetheless, we are respectfully requesting the Planning Board and the Board of Alderman to deny this rezoning request as currently approved and conduct the studies and analyses that I've referenced this evening, as well as collaborate with Fieldcrest to come up with a mutually beneficial plan for everyone involved. You know, resolving this matter as outlined above is what we really want. You know, we're not saying that this should stop, but we would like for it to be good for everyone. And we hope that would be yours as well, but we are very serious about this, it's so important to us that we will continue to pursue this matter by any means necessary and available. I appreciate your time and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak against the proposal?
Next up, we got Linda Thompson.
You'll state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Linda Thompson, 1300 Colston Court in Kernersville. Yes, I, man, after her, I don't know what I'm going to say, but I think everything that she brought up was excellent. I do think the DOT needs to come out, and I think we should definitely get the roads situated before we put new houses in. We definitely have a problem on Shields Road, we have some in Union Cross. I turn into Tredagar a lot, all the time, and there are cars that are passing me at a high speed on the left, which is supposed to be a turning lane. So, I mean, you know, I can't make a turn into Tredagar on the right at 60 miles an hour. So, you know, that's definitely an issue. Also, I was thinking that, I'm not sure how many houses are supposed to be built over there, is it supposed to be like, what, 150?
117, I think is what it is.
Okay, I thought I heard 150, but, okay, so I just don't, I'm not sure that that much land is going to be comparable to that many houses. That's my issue. I'm just calling on my behalf in Tredagar, so anyway, I've lived here for a long time and I'm very concerned. We also have, you know, we do have a problem already with the issue with the, you know, all the games over there, the soccer games and all that, where they close off part of Tredagar, I mean Shields Road anyway, on the weekends. So, I just think that we do need to check with the DOT of North Carolina and have, and do the roads first before we go and put the houses in, because that would, that's just to me, that's putting the cart before the horse. But anyway, also, I think that there's, as far as having the houses comparable to the other houses around us, I think that it's okay, I just think there's too many houses that is on a smaller amount of land over there. So, you know, Kathy pretty much said a lot of things that I was going to say, but that was the few things that I had issues with.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson.
So, I think in Tredagar, uh-huh, I think in Tredagar, we're going to definitely try to get other things, the other issues taken care of before we go building a lot of houses over here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson, appreciate it very much.
Uh-huh. Bye.
Anyone else wish to speak against the petition? Do we have anybody else on, holding or email or anywhere?
No one else has called.
Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Jim? Jim?
Yes.
I do have a number of emails that have come in during the public hearing.
Okay.
And what I'll do, because they're numerous, is I'll just kind of, I'll state the names and then I'll summarize what some of the comments, some of the topics of the comments, because I think most of it has been said. And then I'll, we'll follow back up with the full transcript and I'll provide the full emails of what they've done before we're at the end of our 24-hour public comment period. So, in opposition, we've heard from Tim Yarborough, from Linda Thompson, Dawn Marsh, Bruce Christopherson, David Fitzpatrick, Linda Meadows, George Johnson, Brad Hausnick. And we had a caller, Mary Beth Abdo, but somehow her call, I think that she ended the call on her end. But some of the topics that were brought forth were traffic congestion on Shields Road, cut-through traffic on Emperor Lane, especially during Ivy Redmond events, concerns about density and lot sizes. There was a specific question, how will the town of Kernersville deal with the closure of Shields Road during Ivy Redmond events? A specific call-out on traffic issues in afternoon rush hour, particularly between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., a concern that infrastructure is not in place to support three houses per Another concern of an individual who wanted to voice opposition, but says they are not against development in general, but they are against this particular proposal. A question for Bill Greco, who I believe has left the call, I'm not sure if Bill is still listening, if not, we will share this information with him as well. And the question was, I don't understand the discussion regarding phases, will both phases be built to three homes per acre? Could some lots be smaller, creating a higher density? And just behind that, we had a comment saying that they wanted to point out that Phase One shows four units per acre and Phase Two shows two units per acre. And I believe that is, that's the extent of the emails that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I'll remind the board that we will continue this till our Wednesday meeting at 6:00 p.m. Will not be a public hearing, it'll be just discussion of the board for a decision on this case itself. Next item on our agenda is a presentation of the 2019 Annual Growth and Traffic Data Report.
Rochelle Joseph will be presenting a short presentation.
Nathan, you're shown as the owner, so I'm not sure what that is, but...
I just never change the way my screen is dedicated. One of these days I will.
Rochelle, if you're talking, we can't hear.
Thank you. I was talking. An annual review of Kernersville's growth data is required by the thoroughfare and street plan adopted by the Board of Alderman. An established citizen group reviews the data and provides comments prior to publication of a final draft. The Community Development Department has updated this annual report with 2019 data. The report is broken down into five sections. I won't go into the details and present those details today, but I would like to point out that the report documents growth in several ways, one of which is through permit data that's been maintained since 1995. That data allows us to look at historical trends and make projections regarding future growth in town. So, in next year's update, staff intends to adjust the projections to account for changes in the economy that are taking place right now. In addition, staff has been working on an economic development study to track the impact of COVID-19 on our local economy and to assist businesses with making decisions once the economy starts to recover. Lastly, I'd also like to address that the traffic data that's derived from the North Carolina Department of Transportation's detailed traffic counts, I believe Jeff mentioned this earlier in his presentation, that the reporting that we provided in this document counts from 2003 to 2017, and it's based on NC DOT's publication of the data every two years. So, the 2019 data is expected within the next couple of months and will be reflected in the 2020 growth report that you will see in 2021. So, in order to review the entire report, it will be posted on the town's website, www.toknc.com. And if you go to the Community Development tab, you'll be able to find it there in the Resources section. And feel free to reach out to us with any additional questions or comments that you have regarding the report. Thank you.
Is that the end of the report?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Any questions to staff about the report?
Good job.
Was there a question? Okay.
I don't want to ask the question, but I want to compliment them on their...
I don't want to ask the question, but I want to compliment them on their, uh, report. I think it's an excellent report, and I know they've spent hours and days on getting, compiling it, and I appreciate it. It's a wonderful job.
Thank you.
This is Margaret, this is Margaret Burke speaking, in case you didn't recognize my southern accent.
This is Jeff Hatley, in case, this is Jeff Hatley, in case you didn't recognize my southern accent. Growth and traffic report is used by a lot of people outside the community, it's kind of our data source and projection, so it's, it's probably used by more people outside of Kernersville looking at Kernersville. We take bits and pieces of it over the years to provide economic development partners to promote growth and to explain what the Kernersville is, is all about.
Okay. Next item is public comments, and I think we've already had, anybody have anything they want to address? Do we have anybody waiting in line or anything to speak before the board, other than the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay. Before we get into planning board comments, a couple of questions. Has everybody done all right with the 6:00 p.m. timeframe for the virtual meetings? And just, just to plant a thought in your mind, and we can talk about it Wednesday, if there's any interest in changing the board meetings to 6:00 o'clock, from 7:00 to 6:00. If we do that, we just have to change our, our bylaws, so we'll do that. We'll talk about it further on Wednesday, if you'll just think about that, if there's any interest in doing it. So, we're not pushing it anyway, either way, but whatever it is, maybe some interest in doing it. Okay, planning board comments, Margaret?
Uh, I think that everything has been handled mighty good. I compliment my staff and, and you
Thank you.
for, for getting it all together. I think it's wonderful how y'all have been able to take care of it. Of course, we are doing it to help, help the public so they can get along with our work. And I think that y'all have done a good, an excellent job.
Thank you. Diane? Any comments?
I, no comments, thank you.
Okay, Lorraine?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, Jim?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Steve?
I don't have any comments, but I would like to concur with Margaret.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom?
I, I'm good, thank you, Jim.
Nathan?
No comments, thank you very much.
Chris?
I'm good, thank you.
Joe?
No comment here, thank y'all.
Okay, and I have no comments either. So, again, we'll meet again Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. to make a final decision on the two public hearing cases we had. So, if there is no more business to be brought before the board, we'll stand in...
Jim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, we will continue to meet, yes.
Yeah, so that's the, the session needs to, so tonight, tonight's meeting, we did do a legal ad to also noting that the second meeting would be on Wednesday at 6:00, but yes, this meeting would be adjourned as a continuance of this session to that time, thank you.
Yes, we're going to, we'll continue the, the board meeting on Wednesday, 6:00 p.m.
I have one other thing, Jim, one other thing?
Yeah.
And I apologize, I know tonight several planning board members said they weren't aware of that Wednesday meeting. As some of you may know, the state statute changed since our last meeting. And so, I apologize, we didn't get that out there earlier. We have informed all our, our community people who have participated on that Wednesday, 6:00 o'clock, and they've asked, so we've had a standard mail-out. So, I apologize for that, but I'm looking forward to seeing you guys. I know you guys need to sign up for this type of meeting. Hopefully, we won't get too used to it, someday we'll go back to our normal, but I think we'll be like this for a while, so I appreciate everything. Because we have several cases in July also.
Okay. So, we'll see everybody Wednesday at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you.